Good evening, welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is Monday, January 25th, 2010. And tonight's city council is going to meet in a finance personnel committee, then go into a special session. And once we are finished with that, go into a series of, I think about three more different committee meetings. So to begin, finance and personnel, Member Bain.
Right, and Bill is an optimist, thinking I will be done in 15 minutes.
We'll catch up at 7:15.
Okay, because I have a couple of things that we were going to have on committee of the whole. But having said that, we have Jim Sands introducing a 1310, or 1310 that is going to be maybe one of the last amendments to the non-union pay scale. And it was simply a mistake. We have different anniversary dates, or we did for a while. It comes, it goes, things change, everybody has their idea of what should be good, what wouldn't be good. Anyway, we went back to anniversary dates the first of the year. And when we were working early, you know, trying to get ahead of the game, so to speak, so we knew what our 100 cost would be, we ended up with a mistake in those people that had anniversary dates after, let's say, the 15th of November. And so therefore, there were small little variations in pay, amounting to not nearly as much as they, we probably expended in time to cover them up. But once and for all, just as when they made the Mason-Dixon line, we're thinking this is the final version of it. We have all the corrections on there, they're not highlighted, we're just re-adopting the whole thing. I have to trust that this is exactly what I think it is. And we can see that we have, for example, let's see if I can remember one of them. It doesn't really matter, I guess, oh yeah, Sherri's got her original there. Yeah, there was one where some, a few people went up a few cents, other people went down a few cents. That's fundamentally what happened. And it was because their anniversary date was after that, so their pay rate went up, and small changes, but gotta keep it fair, as fair as we can do it. And in addition to that, on the back, we have pay increases effective 2010. Were calculated on the following basis, and that we've spelled out what we were trying to do. And we say that we had all pay scales increased by 2%. Exactly how the max or min move up 2% with the pay scale. And then those that are what we sometimes call topped out, got a smaller pay scale, or pay increase, 1%, but they're also the people that have probably 6% in longevity coming in. And, you know, but that isn't in the ordinance, that's just my editorial comment, sorry. And then employees at the midpoint do first step increase, will receive both the step and the scale. And that's what we, that's how we propose to do it. So this is a set of minor adjustments. I trust nothing else was changed but those approximately, how many were there, Sherri?
Five.
Five people that were either over or underpaid by a few cents here and a few cents there. Yes?
And the deputy auditor called all of those people and explained what was happening.
Right.
We're correcting that glitch in the pay scale with this ordinance.
And we're not taking anything back. We're not making it retroactive, it's on, as you can see, the effect of the second pay period. So therefore, when we get to that point, we'll have to ask for suspension of the rules to save this, to make sure we're absolutely fair and nobody feels slighted. It's important. Okay, next thing it says, street improvements, income tax renewal. I'm going to pass this on to the mayor. We have, in the past, and we will ask in the future, the people of the city of Athens to renew a income tax street for a 10-year street effort. And the mayor has a timeline he's passed to council members. For a while, we were feeling a little pressure, but now we're talking about the November election at this point in time. And I think all of you have it, have the income tax schema here. He has colored ink, I'm jealous.
Actually, I used Debbie's computer.
Oh, okay, it was Debbie's computer. Okay, so...
Sorry, it came out of your account, if you will.
Oh, cheapers. And then you can see, like, the community center grant is on there, and streets. We had a small overlap, 2002, 2003, and that was when we were really trying to get East State Street under pavement. And very few people would now look at it and say, "Oh, you shouldn't have done that." It's always, almost always very congested, even now. But I know some people said, "Why didn't they do it a different way?" And I said, "Well, tell me, how would you have done it?" But anyway, so there's always a lot of time to second guess. But what we, and the mayor, if you want to continue on, since you made the colored schema and this wonderful handout, anything you want to say about it?
Okay, well, essentially, the back portion is the ordinances that are, I think I'm missing one along the way, but I think it covers all the ordinances that we've done to increase the taxes, income tax, over the 1%. According to Ohio Revised Code, if you go over 1% in the increment thereof, you have to go to the ballot. If you look, you notice in 83, we did a .1% or 10, 100ths of a percent for 10 years for the law administration building. We actually, I don't know the history of it, because for my time, in 86, we did a .4 increase, which is in perpetuity.
And that was in response to the dramatic financial crisis of 84, 86.
Okay, you have a historical memory of this.
Yes, it's very gut-wrenching to lay off people, especially firemen and court officers.
And on your timeline, that's in yellow, of course.
That's in yellow, that's permanent addition.
And again, we had, as the law administration building expired in 93, we actually added on a street, we have .1% to replace the law administration building monies. The law administration building, if you remember, was for the building and paying it back. And again, I'm hearing this from a historical perspective. You can see where we added on the Athens Community Center, the two levies, 137, 138 of 95, one sunset in 2016, that's for the actual building, if you remember, and the other one for .05 is for the actual operations. Streets, again, sunsetted, the first one sunsetted in 2003, but you'll notice there's an overlap from 2002 and 2003 for the next one that we replaced with. We're coming up on 2011, a sunset of the .1 as well. And that's why I bring this up, just in context, we should think about renewing that. We have still, as you know, when you go to the street tours regularly, we get a list of all the streets that need to be repaired, we usually get one-third of the way down the list before we run out of money. I know, I've seen many of you on the bus when I was a citizen, as well as on city council. To renew this, of course, it's, will be, we'd probably not rush it and have some discussion. We'll probably try putting it on a November ballot, but I want to start the conversation early, so we can think of what we can accomplish and whether we want to do it. I mean, I was just at a luncheon today where somebody was asking me about Grosvenor and what's going on with the slip there. I think that's, I think the quote there is a $300,000 fix, and we have lots of other little places to fix. We're talking about the Oxbow Bridge eventually, which is slated for 2012, I think, not to steal your thunder there, I believe you're, don't bring it up, Chris.
Brett?
So that's really what it is. We're not trying to, I'm not trying to speed it up, I just want to let you aware of it. The tax has usually brought in about almost $600,000 per year.
And just for your, for your kind of reference, this 2.5 million dollar grant for redoing the Richland Avenue Bridge, the old one, would require about a million on our part. And the, we will absolutely have to have another source of income for that. And I think that's one thing we would ask for at that point in time. So, I mean, it's all well and good to have 2.5 million, but if you don't have 3.5, you're not going to get it done, so that's what the argument will be. And we'll put together a little argument page, and I'll go door-to-door in the third ward, I hope you guys will too, when we start asking for this to happen, and we can convince the voters that we will make good use of this small little overlap. Gary Van Meter was the one who sponsored it the last time, we all went along, and the voters approved it.
And again, that was for the widening of East State Street.
For the East State Street, yes, and we used it for that.
Realizing we'd get paid back, we had a bond floating, we'd get money back from the TIF, but the fact is, the cash flow was one of the issues.
The cash flow was a major problem, and we have to always continue to do, as we all noticed, in front of the various places, little potholes that are now there and jarring our sensibilities. Okay, so we have five minutes, and I'm going to turn it over to Sherri. You want to talk?
Yes, I do, thank you.
This is finance, also.
I'm not sure how appropriate this is for finance, but Member Bain has been kind enough to let me have this time. So I wanted to give a little report on the meeting that we had Friday night on the proposed amplified sound stages ordinance that we've been talking about. As a matter of fact, I'll pass out the draft that we were working with at that meeting, which was attended by, in addition to myself, and chief mayor, representatives from the neighborhood associations, John Paskey from code enforcement, there were two people there from OU Student Senate. There was a major concern that this proposed ordinance would encourage more outdoor music events if we have a permit for it, and may contribute, may have an effect that we don't really want to have if we go forward with this proposed ordinance. The thought was that perhaps we should even ban stages in residential areas. There was a lot of concern about the noise in residential areas. Even the representatives from OU Student Senate were very concerned about the noise. Nobody wants to outlaw parties, they just don't want them to be on stages and amplified bands and so forth. So there was a lot of concern about that, that they're thinking maybe we shouldn't even have the permit, the permit process. Another concern was people on roofs, on, not just house roofs, but on porch roofs. Apparently, it's a hazard when, because of the weight, the roof disconnects from the house where it's connected to the house. And people, it's not only dangerous to the people standing on, or on the roof, but to the people underneath the roof. There was a lot of concern about that. Also, it was expressed that perhaps there should, we should have more muscle in our noise ordinance. There was a lot of concern about noise. The next meeting is February 12th at 5 o'clock, and at that meeting, the OU Dean of Students is also going to be invited. So I would appreciate any input that anybody has prior to that, prior to that meeting, so I can take it back to the group. The 12th, February 12th at 5 o'clock is the next meeting.
From office, City Hall?
Yes, in the conference room at City Hall, yes, right.
Is there any chance they'll be trying to get this passed by spring?
Well, there's a chance, but if we go with the, it doesn't look good for the permitting process. If we go with that, then it would probably be impossible to get that, because there's a lot to do to get that. But it's not looking good for that part of the ordinance at this point.
Anyone else have a point they'd like to make? We have one minute to go.
Is it different between amplified musical instruments or just recorded music played very loud?
If it's very loud, everybody has a problem with it, whether it's amplified or not, if it's very loud. One of the concerns was that if we ask people to get their permits and pay the fees and get the liability insurance...
Have they got the right to do it?
Do they have the right to do it? Or are we going to then go in and shut them down, saying, "Hey, you're in violation of the noise ordinance, even though you have the insurance?" And, you know, that could cause a lot of hard feelings. So, it's a puzzle.
There you are.
Well, I hope you get it worked out, yes.
I hope so.
Sherri, during the conversation, I actually ran into some citizens on the west side who felt that amplified music should be just totally verboten, not allowed whatsoever. Same reason that you're talking about. What did, the, one of the things I see is implementation of this, being the administration here. We have a noise ordinance, it's hard to enforce because of personnel we have. To put, we have a nuisance party ordinance, which, you know, requires somebody to be there to actually shut it down. I, looking at the, I don't know if the draft you have now is equivalent to what was in November, put together in November, but I know there was lots of steps, a lot of, like a 60-day period to actually apply for the permit. Again, it comes down to enforcement of this. Was there any discussion of that prior, within the meeting?
There was some discussion about enforcement, and one of the neighborhood association people from the west side said that they have a, they have a problem when these events occur because our officers are busy where the event is, but people coming from that event come over to the west side and they're, they're trashing, they're vandalizing and doing things that are illegal. But the officers don't, can't be over there because they're busy other places, so enforcement is an issue, yes.
Other comments? We'll adjourn in, I mean, we will adjourn and go into our special session in one second. The one thing that Sherri probably will be discussing in the future, that we were talking about discussing at this meeting, is the question of the 1.1 million dollar fire truck, the truck that we need to replace, the one that many people have to ride on on Saturday, and see how that will go. That will be a big question from the financial point of view, and so I think we have to find out what's going on with our little nest egg that was for...
Yes, we do.
And once we know, we'll be back talking about how we might finance this truck. Okay.
Code order, the special session of Athens City Council for January 25th, 2010. We do have a quorum, all members of council present. Ordinances for second reading, 0910, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street from Union to State Street on Saturday, May 15th, 2010, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the International Street Fair. Ordinance 1010, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 23 zoning code, chapter 23.04, permitted uses in our one residential zones, one family, and Title 99 definitions, chapter 99.01.05, applied meanings of words and terms. Member Paul, did you wish to speak to this tonight?
Yeah, a couple council members and the mayor asked what caged birds, the definition or the meaning of caged birds, and whether that particularly meant chickens? And I think the, because partly this is going to have to be passed with a supermajority, because it's different from the planning commission's wording. And also, I think that the discussion about chickens needs to be, have a full and frank discussion about it, and I see something like that being a different ordinance. And so, caged birds in this case is, is the general use of caged birds meaning parrots. And this ordinance, most of this wording came out of other ordinances in other cities, and they've always, it's kind of a traditional use for caged birds. And that anything having to do with chickens will come out later. And I see something, you know, along the lines of having a permit process or something for chickens, if we do decide to have the urban chicken.
Mayor Wile?
So it really means indoor caged birds. Sometimes you might put it on your porch.
Chicken bits would be indoors.
I mean, people will take parrots and, you know, parakeets.
But not 24 hours a day, you know, "How you doing?"
During the summer, some people...
"Holly wants a cracker when you walk down the street."
Well...
Well, you'd put a cover over it at night.
Right. I mean, people do put parrots and such outside all summer, but...
But the intent is not to...
Right.
Okay.
Other comments? Member Butler?
Thank you, sir.
Choose to weigh in on this.
Silly guy. I understand the mayor's concerns and frank discussions we've had in the past about enforcement. It's easy to sit up here, pass legislation, sign off on it, whatever, and then he has a responsibility to handle the enforcement of things. So I, sometimes in the world of art, we talk about in the minimalist movement, less is more. And so, there's a side of me that doesn't want to pollute the landscape with more legislation. But in this case, sometimes clarification and definition and simplification, specific to hens might be relevant. So there has been talk with other members in the community who have expressed interest, Rhonda Clark being one who's here tonight, in getting together with another committee group to discuss the definition and legislation surrounding what might be a workable, permissible process here for hens or chickens within the community.
Other comments? And just so all members of council and anyone else in the audience that does not understand, a supermajority in this case, since the planning commission will recommend, council can pass it with four votes, but to alter it in a way and pass it takes a supermajority. I'm going to ask our law director, is that six out of seven votes, I believe, that is six out of seven votes it will take to pass it the way that it is presented now. On to ordinance 1110, an ordinance revoking the revocable license granted to Ohio University for use of the Morris Avenue city right-of-way pursuant to ordinance 13305, introduced by Member Paul. On to ordinances for first reading, ordinance 1310, an ordinance amending ordinance 14609, non-union pay scale to correct errors and identifying individual pay rates and to accurately reflect all rates in effect during 2010, and declaring an emergency. Member Sands?
Actually, Mr. President, Member Paul is going to go with that.
Member Bain?
What did I say? Member Paul?
You said Paul.
Not Member Paul, Member Coon.
One, two, three.
I didn't go down far enough. Member Coon was going to handle that.
Very good. Our newest member of the finance committee.
Yes. Mr. President, I move to consider ordinance 1310 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for this is so that this correction can be made prior to the second pay in 2010, which is coming up this week.
Other comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 1310? Opposed, the rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance 1310.
Second.
For the same reasons that I, same reason that I just mentioned, that we need to make this correction so that these folks can receive the correct amount of money in their second pay for the year 2010.
And this was discussed ever so recently in a committee meeting. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, the ordinance has been adopted, and that is the last ordinance for council's consideration on tonight's agenda. Having addressed all items, the special session stands adjourned. And we now move on to an environmental committee, committee chair, Alahu Gausmi.
Bill, could we finish up the finance committee? There's just a little bit left to do.
I did not realize we didn't.
And we did not?
I apologize. I apologize, Mr. Gausmi.
This is Locofer from the street tour, and, I mean, from our fireplace department tour. And I just wanted to make sure that we are in position to start, give the safety service director information that she needs to proceed.
Do you have a copy for her?
And I think I got the copy from them originally, but I'll be happy to give that a copy.
Yeah, we can just copy.
Okay. She has all of the copies down on her desk right now. Okay, so when we were on this tour the other day, we stopped to look at two places in order to talk about something specific, and she will be negotiating eventually the outcome of this. And there are two parts to it. The first part is, and we will eventually then have the ordinance coming up with all committee members sponsoring it. We don't want to get too, too far into it, but in 8900 and 8990, that would be 10 years ago, Ed Baum produced an ordinance granting a revocable license to Ohio University for use of a portion of the city right-of-way on Riverside Drive for parking. And this is one of the earlier efforts at right-of-way revocable license usage. And we went by and saw it, I wanted you all to see it before I brought this up. It's been part of a sort of informal assignment that the president gave me a while ago, not Barack Obama, but Bill Byas. Okay, so if you take a look at Riverside Drive on the bottom of the map, I'm sorry, I couldn't resist, there are a series of lines, and we talked about those the other day. When the initial proposal came to us, it was to vacate Riverside Drive and just hand it all over. And about that time, it was this time of year, the pipe, one of those 18-inch water pipes blew, and there was water all over everything. And I think at that point, we said, "Ooh, I think a revocable license is just what we need here, not a vacation of the right-of-way." And in fact, there's a larger question that I think was previous council policy, I don't know what this council thinks about it, maybe at a later date we can discuss that, but we have not been, except in extreme circumstances, very eager to give up right-of-way, rights-of-way because what we have are service lines in them and adjacent to them, and that's the principle. And then the other thing, I guess I'm looking for some sort of, make sure no one has a problem with it, but the other thing we talked about, and the service safety director described what was going on, OU also would like to have us vacate Moore Street. And I know Sherri asked if there was, in the vicinity from Factory Street to the right-of-way that's over there. And, you know, it seemed that, as we looked at it, one of the questions was, you know, where will the traffic go, how will it go? And if anybody has any sort of cautionary items they wanted to give to the service director, safety service director, you could do it now. This is just FYI, I wanted to make sure everybody knew we're talking about it. I don't know that we're ready to go, I'd like to see more discreet plans at this point in time. And, but when the other part comes out, I think we can probably re-grant the revocable license, unless you, I have a strong, hear a strong objection. Okay, questions, I hear? None? Brains, oh, yeah. Paul?
You might have said that I didn't hear, the other portion was for the OU Credit Union, 18.
Oh, yeah, I didn't bring that up, 90, I have one too. So we have two to renew this year. And so those will go through normal process. And the Moore Avenue one, we'll just want more information. And I think all of us know that there is a problem with circulation in that area, there's a problem with safety, and so before anything goes further, we need to have some assurances that there is a solution that's at hand. We have the driveway that goes up there, I believe it's not a driveway though, I think it's actually a platted street, it's a brick street. What's its name, do you remember?
Ravitz, you mean?
Ravitz Street, yeah.
The one perpendicular to Moore?
Okay, Ravitz.
I think it's Ravitz. The one going from Moore to U West Union.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's right. It's a two-lane street, no parking, and so...
Actually, I think it's an alleyway, really.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's on this, it's platted, it doesn't say it has right-of-way. Okay, so that's what I wanted to bring up, so make sure everyone knew what was... You're going to be here for a while, right?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so let's just go ahead and let Alahu decide where he wants to put that. The billing upgrade or the other thing?
That comment doesn't work, is it enough? I mean, we've talked about it in the past, and you had asked me to go back and get the web base, I don't have the hard figures in front of me. Do you feel that it needs to come to that level to committee first?
Please.
Okay.
I mean, I think it's, I just want to make sure it's not as expensive as they said initially.
I thought that included hardware.
Some hardware, and some new software programs.
I mean, you know, it's got a...
That would link with the auditor's office, that would all be very smooth. She laughed, but, yeah.
Well, see, so, but I mean, you know, just because it works for the auditor, I think it has to also work for the utility users. As long as she's not here, I can talk hard.
Is that everything, Nancy?
Well, yeah, so, go ahead, you're on.
All right, the environmental committee will take up a little bit of time tonight. We have a visitor from Community Food Initiatives, and then there's a couple miscellaneous items as well. Community Food Initiative, otherwise known as CFI, has been around for a few years, doing what I think is really important work in Athens, teaching people how to grow their own food and doing a lot of educational work around that, and also working with composting and doing programs around that as well. They receive a little bit of funding from the city each year over the past few years, not a lot, but enough to help them run some other programs. So Rhonda Clark, go ahead and start your presentation.
Thank you. I titled it "Real Food for Real People," because I think most people know I'm very good at saying about real food. Here, we have some pictures of the West Side Community Gardens and some of the Hope Kids and the Nelsonville cupboard where we donate food. CFI's mission is to help local people become self-sufficient in their food production. We help community members acquire the tools and education they need to install, maintain, and harvest their personal gardens, as well as cook and preserve the fruits of their labor. We teach how to compost, save vegetable seeds, create jobs by teaching how to sell at local markets, and we provide emergency food supplies for the... at local markets, and we provide emergency food supplies for the CFI donation station. We do more than that, but I can't fit it in the square. Why we do what we do? To fight hunger and poverty, increase local food security, to increase the health of our residents, and to fight food-related disorders such as diabetes, obesity, cancer, and heart disease, and to teach people and communities how to live closer to the earth and have a more sustainable lifestyle. The programming that we have, we've been in existence since 1992. We were spawned off of ACENet in 1992, became a 501(c)(3) in 1994. Our programs include the Athens Community Gardens, and we have gardens on the west side of Athens, on the east side of Athens at Hope. We have gardens in Gloucester, Stewart, Nelsonville, Chancie, the Plains, and Chester Hill in Morgan County. We do community composting, edible schoolyards at Athens City Schools, Trimble Local Schools, Nelsonville York. We give away free seeds in Chancie, Gloucester, Mineral, Lotridge, Nelsonville, and of course in Athens. We do the CFI Seed Savers, where we teach people how to save their own seeds. We run the Trimble Township Farmers Market, and we have had over 40 food preservation and planting blueberry bushes and composting workshops in 2009. CFI deals in real food, not junk food, just to make it, just to bring it to home. But I'm very passionate about using real food in all of our programming, and that includes at the Hope Gardens Summer Youth Project and all, and the schools and whatnot. CFI projects within the city of Athens, the ones I'll be talking about today are the West Side Community Gardens, Hope Gardens, community composting, CFI donation station, and a few 2010 goals. At the West Side Community Gardens, we survey the gardeners every year. This is our sixth year surveying them, and these are the results of the 2009 survey. Because of the community gardens, 100% of the gardeners learned more about gardening, 74% care more about the environment, 96% more had a very good or excellent experience, 76% eat more fruits and vegetables, 78% eat more organic fruits and vegetables, 73.5% make better choices about what they eat, 74% spend less money on food, 66% are more physically active, and 64% feel that they have impacted our community food supply. Here are statistics for 2000, here's, shows you all the surveys from 2004 to 2009 and some of the statistics out of that. The blue is, of course, 2009. Okay? At the West Side, I just want to note that we have maxed out. We're no longer able to expand any bigger at West Side, so we're hoping to open up on east side and pull some of those people from West Side over there and spread it out over the whole city. We're working with, I have a presentation tomorrow with the Red Cross to see if we should start over on their land. So they did do community gardening during the Victory Gardens in the 1940s. The Red Cross as a whole did, yeah.
That's on May, right?
That's on May. Well, it's actually on Hudson, at the end of Hudson. Yeah, by that big white building. At the Hope, community gardens, Hope Apartments are located at the end of East State Street, across from Diagnostic Hybrids right there, and that is public housing. And so we had 12 family plots where we dug up spots between, behind their apartment buildings. We also really pushed them to grow on their back porches in pots. There's not a lot of room in there, so we had a lot of food on the back porches. Here, we had the Hope Gardens Summer Youth Program, and this is their plot, and the picture on the left is their plot, and both of them are the pictures on the left, before and after. And it is an eight-week program in June to August that where we teach the kids, and we have a camp where we teach the kids how to grow their own food and how to process their food. Another thing we added on in 2009 was a USDA summer feeding site. On Tuesday lunches, we had the kids take the food from their garden and also food from the community and from the donation station. They processed it themselves, they made their own lunch, they ate it, they cleaned up, and we also sent them home with food from the donation station. You can see right here the pizza that they made. And on the bottom left is the Junior Chef School at the Athens Farmers Market. So we got scholarships for these kids to do the Junior Chef School. We also had a program where the older kids were, we had to go through an interview process, and they had to, and they were chosen, and all of them were chosen, basically, but they were sold at the Athens Farmers Market under the YEAH program, and so youth entrepreneurs at Hope. And here you can see, we have another garden over there that's on a production level, and we have volunteers from the community come in and teach them how to grow on a larger scale. And the kids learned a lot about business, and one thing that we noticed a lot more, this is their second season selling, it was their first full season, second season selling at the farmers market, that they have a lot more poise and a lot more confidence in themselves as they walk around. It's pretty amazing to watch these kids this year, it's totally...
How much money did they make?
I want to say they made maybe $600 between them, and they got to divide, they got to keep the money.
Wow, good.
Yeah, so it's just, and that was pretty important to them. I mean, we can't buy gas to get to anywhere. They, the money actually went back into their family budget most of the time. We also do community composting. We did a lot of backyard composting this year. We have three composting angel volunteers that have gone around the city and doing backyard composting workshops. We have a Vista that we just hired in November to help with composting. We organized a large backyard composting advertising campaign. We've just created a backyard composting brochure. That's not out yet. It's done, but not out yet. We're working at the Athens High School to get composting and developing vermiculture, which is worm composting and composting curriculum for the elementary school level. That's also going along with food curriculum, how to make squash soup and how to grow gardens and whatnot. And we're going to put that in East Elementary, the Plains, and Chancie. Some stuff, the compost workshops we had in 2009 were at the Hope Drive Summer Youth Project, the West Side Community Gardens, a private residence on Sunnyside Drive, Christ the King Church, Sycamore Run, Coad, another private residence, two private residences on Morris and Graham, and then we had a compost tour on the east side. Here's a wonderful picture of Keith, who's now retired. Keith runs the CFI donation station at the Athens Farmers Market, and that is a, we've set up a distribution system so that we can accept food from the community, fresh product from the community, and get it to over 40, I think it's 37, actually, 37 locations in the county and in Meigs County. The produce comes from the community gardeners, from gardeners in the community in their backyards, Athens Farmers Market consumers, and the Athens Farmers Market vendors. Here are some of the locations that we donate to in the county, and we have Albany Baptist Church, Athens Community Church, WIC Office, Feed My Sheep Food Pantry, Kilford Community Center, My Sister's Place, Nelsonville Food Cupboard, 4-H Kids in Trimble, there's a lot of, they're not all on here. So these are all, some of the places. The total number, 12 pounds of fresh fruit from the donation station in 2009 was much higher than we thought it would be. It was 58,702 pounds that we collected of only fresh produce. And we also include like crumbs bread and JV King's meat and things like that. But we don't include hot dogs, or hot dog buns, or potato chips, or, you know, Krispy Kreme donuts, those are not in there. Some of the stuff that we're working on, we're working on a front, we had the front yard gardening code changes that we worked on with the city council in the fall. So we've made it easier for the residents to have gardens in their front yard. We're also working on a front yard gardening brochure. We're working with Paul Logue on that. Fruit trees in Athens, Kent's wife Lori Gromen has mapped out the fruit trees that we can find in Athens, so it's on Google Maps. So if you Google "fruit trees in Athens," if you go to Google Maps and then type in "fruit trees in Athens," it should come up. We're still working on that. We'd like to, some of them don't have variety names on them. We're trying to figure that out, and then we can give a little description of when they're ripe and what they are. And Dr. Holman from OU has just gotten a grant to buy more fruit trees for the city of Athens, so we're going to, we have a lot of apple, let's say that. A lot of apple trees, not much else. We have some pears and some, one peach, I think. So we're trying to introduce some peaches and cherries and plums and try and broaden that out. And we'll try and put it by, like the West Side Gardens, where there are already people to prune them and maintain them. We also would like to make the West Side Gardens self-governing so that they can run their own situation over there, because we put a lot of staff time into the West Side, and we think that we need to move into the east side and put more effort into Hope and out into the county. In the future, we would like to have some, hint, 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 we'd like to have some Athens City policy securing land for community gardens. And so I don't know how, I'm not exactly an expert at wording this, but I could see something along the lines of, the city of Athens will have, will devote three acres of land to community gardening in the city on municipal land, or something like that. We can figure out the numbers later, but I would love to have something that makes gardening, community gardening last for 100 years. I think it needs to last beyond us. This is not the Victory Gardens. It's not done when the war is over. This is something that has to be a lifestyle change because of our health of our children. Backyard composting code updates, we, along with the animals, domestic animal code updates, we're, you know, we're just starting the processes on those. Expanding the Hope Garden projects, expanding community gardens to the east side, and of course, increasing food security. So I just want to say thank you for your support. If you have any questions, I don't want to take too much of your time, but...
Thank you, that was a great presentation. Comments from council members or questions?
I had a question, Rhonda. The last slide you showed, a policy regarding securing gardening land. The land that's utilized on the west side, that is on Athens City property, right?
Yeah, it's partially on OU property. There's a little, it kind of jigjags through the...
But, but right now, the gardens are only there?
Yeah, there's nothing that says that they have, that they maybe stay there.
Okay, so we're looking for something more permanent?
Permanent, something that would make it so that somebody couldn't just come in and...
I understand what you're saying.
I'll point out, that is city property, but it's also flood plain. It might even be floodway zone for that, for the West Side Gardens.
It did flood a couple years, four, five years ago.
Oh, yeah, quite a bit.
But we expect that, so.
But that's, I mean, in terms of somebody changing it over, I guess you could, of course, turn it into, you know, sports or recreation, I imagine. So I can see why you'd want a policy in place. And I know we've still been trying to work out something on the west, on the east side as well. We haven't come to any...
Yeah, I haven't come to any spots yet. Everything seems to have something, some reason why it's not going to work out. The rec center is too mucky, the library doesn't want it by them, there's all these issues with how many owners there of that land over by the library. The sewage treatment plant, we felt that the gardeners wouldn't want to be by the smell, but I guess that might be getting solved, so we'll see what happens there. But that might turn into something, that could either be an orchard, or it could turn into something that's more perennial as opposed to having to be there all the time. So we have some ideas for that. And then the Morris Avenue Right-of-Way is always a possibility that hasn't been solved yet. And then, we're hoping, we're trying to go for pocket parks, like you guys call them. So the Red Cross is our first move into the east side, and we're hoping that everybody will go, oh, that's what you mean by community gardening. Well, there's a spot over here. Then if we figure, we got two or three spots that equal about 100 people, we have 160 people over on West Side right now, in a little over an acre. So I think three, two or three small pocket parks could solve the east side.
I think there's one on the corner of Alexander and Patton, but it's not level. It's got a hill to it and there's some trees there, but it's mostly lawn, and as far as I know, we're cutting it. So I can imagine...
Is it city land?
City land.
Yeah, I like it on city land.
Yeah, the city land is...
I don't like private.
It's, yeah, it's close to me. It's the side of a hill, really.
It's over by your shop?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, it could be terrace, that's what she's going to...
Terrace is tough, but yeah, that's an issue that we have to deal with in Athens. Everything's kind of...
Please.
Thank you, Rhonda, for your presentation. Prior to the meeting this evening, I was teasing and harassing member Ghazni for stealing you from the REC Arts Parks and Recreation Committee, so he claims you for environment committee tonight, so I appreciate...
It's going to be fought over, right?
Yes, exactly. So thank you for your presentation. Regarding the grant and money that, was it Dr.?
Holman, Dr. Stephen Holman, yeah.
So I would just encourage yourself, CFI, and him as well to check in, obviously, with the tree commission before planting trees.
Yeah.
Because I think their input is valuable in that regard.
I'd like to move some of those apple trees from the west sides that were put in over there by the gardens to the east side, if possible. There's a lot of apple trees. I'm kind of worried that the West Side gardeners are not going to eat them all, they're going to kind of get mowed over and shot at people at the, I'm kind of, I would rather have them kind of spread about, because I think that's just, I don't think that West Side gardeners could consume that many apples, if all those apples produce. There's about 13 or 14 trees over there. I'd rather take some of those out and put cherry trees in, and peach trees, and plum trees, and diversify. And so if we could figure, that'd be kind of, I'll have to talk to Andy Stone. Another thing that's really interesting that's happening is this ritual and roundabout. Now, Alvy McWilliams maintained some gardens that were over there for about 20, 25 years, and so now they're taking those gardens out, and Alvy McWilliams and CFI have worked with Andy Stone, and they're going to bring that soil that was in those gardens to the Hope Kids on Thursday, hopefully. This is our third shot at trying to get it moved, but Andy Stone is really bending over backwards to help us with that. He's getting the trucks over and then the backhoe, and they're digging it all out and bringing it hopefully on Thursday. So that'll really up the production level of these kids, and they'll be able to sell more food, too, so it's really exciting. That's just a really nice gift. I mean, I would love to have compost for my birthday, but that's just a really great, I mean, Alvy McWilliams has been babying that soil for 27 years. So, yeah, so that's a really good gift from the city that they're willing to put their men and trucks over and bring that over there.
Paul?
I'd just like to state that we are working right now on an updated revised annual memorandum of understanding between the community gardens and the city. And there will indeed be a wellhead protection training portion to that. So you're telling me tonight you want to go, them to be self-governing, and we still would like to get the plats laid out, who's gardening and what, and then have the education because you're in the wellhead protection area. So we need to make sure that they're not bringing something in that might...
And I'd say most of our gardeners are pro-organic, for sure, yeah, and they're very happy that you guys, it's kind of like we have to say, oh, we have to be organic, because the city's told us to, you know, so we can...
So we're the bad guys, huh?
We don't get any slack for it, because we're like, city told us to do it, you know, and so we like that. It's kind of like we get this backup from you guys, so, yeah.
Mike Cooper would conduct that, and there are some issues sometimes with composting and what's brought in and into...
Thank you. Greg, please come up.
Just a quick...
Greg Rogers, 14 Grandville. While we were, just before in the last session, we're talking about revocable licenses. So again, I'll call your attention to city council resolution 0200, which actually lays out the requirements for the use of city land and the issuing or conveyance of a revocable license. And I see that all users, whoever they may be, the goose and the gander, you know, need to take a look at this. And that already spells it out what the requirements are, and it, and it's set down on a form that's not just for a memorandum of understanding that might dissolve with an administration change, but something that sets down for a long-term period of time based upon requirements that have already been set out in that original resolution. So again, check again on 0200, and I believe that Debbie Walker can help you find it if you can already, but I think it's available on the website.
I believe that the guy who wrote those requirements also wrote this revocable license thing that we're renewing, so it may be a non-problem, Greg.
I know that, but before, things were basically going the way of MOUs and...
No, no, I meant Edbaum did both of the things. So I mean, it's his ordinance and it's his revocable license, so I think it's a non-problem.
Oh, okay, yeah, I just want to suggest that we have some kind of consistency with dealing with land use issues and use of city land. Thanks.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions?
I have a bit of a conflict of interest, because my husband does gardening, but I, and I sometimes help him, but I just wonder about moving trees that are already planted. I just, I don't know about that. I have, when you said that, I went, oh, I don't think...
Well, we moved, we had to move some trees, the water, they were underneath the power lines, and we had to move them about three years ago. They were three, they were in their third season, and they did great, the city came in with the backhoe and moved them, and they blossomed in everything that same year, so... And these are on their, just starting their third year. They're quite small trees, they're not very large, so, yeah.
It makes me concerned a little bit. I mean, between that and the deer, I can't imagine that you would have...
Yeah, well, they have fencing around them. Yeah, I think they'd be all right, because they're quite young.
But, you know, it just seems like, well, I'm not going to tell you how to do business, but, okay.
Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is miscellaneous, and I do have two items there. The next is a very different kind of garden, something called a rain garden, which we heard from the Soil and Water Conservation District for Athens County a couple of weeks ago, and heard a little bit about rain gardens and that they're interested in trying to use these locally. And these are something that's put in an area with a lot of concrete, a lot of stormwater runoff, that would normally, the city would have to deal with through the wastewater runoff avenues. But this is constructing some sort of natural vegetative way to absorb the water during storms and hold it, and then let it slowly dissipate. There was recently an Ohio EPA grant that would support rain gardens. I know Paul Logue has been looking at this, and he's been talking with the Soil and Water Conservation District, as well as the Tree Commission, and Ron Lucas has, I've heard him in the past talk about trying to get something, a demonstration project in Athens. So there was interest from all these different groups. The deadline is fast approaching. It's February, it's February 15th deadline. The good news is there is no cost match requirement, so it wouldn't cost the city anything if we were to apply. One option is the Soil and Water Conservation District would apply, but it would probably be helpful to have resolution support if they were the entity. Paula, do you know more about this?
I think that, did you already state the deadline application?
February 15?
Yes. I think even, it could be a resolution or whatever, supporting this application. They'll be the lead applicant on the Athens City.
And I think the locations that are being discussed right now are possibly the Athens Community Center property and down by City Code, possibly as well.
With the understanding that developers come into the code office, and then there would be an example of rain gardens.
So unless there's objection, we.
Only landlords. Although they have a really nice landscape, aren't they? I was like, oh, sorry.
Anything but the asphalt.
If there are any objections, then I will likely have a resolution of some sort for our next meeting to consider supporting this. Any, any questions on? Last item on my agenda is the Athens Beautification Day. This is something that Ohio University Student Senate has been doing. It's a great way they've been giving back to the Athens community over the past few years, and it's time once again to get ideas to them. The beautification day is planned for the weekend of April 30th this year, and they're looking to do more, more types of projects that will create more of a long-lasting impact. They mentioned possibly planting trees by elementary schools, those sort of things, rather than a quick fix litter pickup, which they have done a lot of that in the past as well. So basically, this is just a call for ideas. If anyone has ideas of projects in the city that they, they think would be appropriate, get them to City Council or to Ohio University Student Senate as well. Unless anyone else has miscellaneous, then that's good for the mermaid committee.
On to the Recreation Committee, Committee Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Butler. Thank you, President Vice. This evening, we have Molly Wales, President, correct, of the Birth Circle?
Director.
Director, sorry, my apologies. Director of the Birth Circle, along with other members of the Birth Circle, and Dr. Connie Patterson is accompanying her as well, to share with us a little about the Lost Memorial, which we discussed in previous meetings, and the dedication of a space and park bench, which has also been discussed with Paula and Rich, and Director of Arts Parks Recreation, Rich Campatelli. And I think Ryan Lucas was part of the discussion as well. So I will go ahead and turn it over for your presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone. My name is Molly Wales. I'm the Executive Director of the Athens Birth Circle. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We were founded in 2002 and got our nonprofit status in 2004. We are an informational discussion and support group for pregnant women, their families, and also new moms as well. Our mission is to educate, support, and empower women and their families as they journey through pregnancy, childbirth, the postpartum period, and early childhood. I have with me today Dr. Connie Patterson, who will speak in a moment, one of my board members, and a Birth Circle volunteer as well. The Birth Circle gathers at monthly meetings to share tips, experiences, information, and ideas, always with the intention of creating a sense of community. As a group, we explore all options available to birthing families while promoting a feeling of openness. All backgrounds, experiences, and choices are honored. In addition to the monthly meetings, we also offer a Meals for Moms program, where Birth Circle volunteers will prepare and deliver meals to postpartum families in the weeks after birth. We have a monthly playgroup, which meets at the Athens Library, an online forum where people can bring their parenting questions. And also, recently, in response to a lack of local support for parents struggling with pregnancy loss, fertility, and postpartum depression, in 2009, we started offering bimonthly support groups for those topics. And a program that I left out, we also have a lending library of books, DVDs, and birth accessories, which are birth pools, birth stools, those sorts of things. Everything that we do is offered for free or at a very nominal cost to participants and is open to the public. And as of last count, we have served almost 1,000 local families since 2002. The reason we're here today is because we would like to set up a memorial to honor pregnancy and infant loss, which can refer to miscarriage, stillbirth, or even missing and mourning a pregnancy after a healthy baby is born. According to the American Pregnancy Association, over 20% of all clinically recognized pregnancies end in miscarriage, 20%, yet this particular kind of loss and the feelings of grief associated with it are not generally addressed publicly. Because the Birth Circle serves pregnant and new parents, we are acutely aware of just how prevalent and how devastating pregnancy loss can be, and we see the memorial as a way to acknowledge, acknowledge parents' suffering and to honor the lives lost. Our vision is to have a bench, and we have a Birth Circle father who's a woodworker and local contractor who has offered to make one for us, with a plaque that would read, "In honor of pregnancy and infant loss, we mourn and celebrate the short lives of our babies with love from the Birth Circle." We are very open to suggestions for a location, but so far, our first choice would be at Sales Park in a flat area to the side of the pond. If you're facing the pond, it's sort of off to the right a little bit. The spot is beautiful, private, and easily accessible, perfect for a family, say, to set up a picnic or bring the children to play. But wherever, wherever it is, the memorial bench will both honor the experience of pregnancy loss and will give parents a specific place to go to reflect and mourn. We also intend to have a public ceremony there every year on National Pregnancy Loss Day, which is in October, I believe, on the 15th. We are happy to be in charge of maintaining the bench. I believe right now the city mows the area where we've chosen, but we would be happy to maintain the bench itself or even replace it when the time comes, as this issue will clearly be ongoing, and the Birth Circle will be here as long, for a while, for a long time. When we first saw this need and started this project, I had no personal experience with pregnancy loss. Then this summer in August, I had a miscarriage at 11 weeks. There was no funeral for my child. Sorry. There was no funeral for my child, no public grave to recognize my child's life and death. Condolences passed quickly, though my sadness clearly hasn't really faded. And because mothers in this situation are typically told to just move on, which I have heard many times, I feel awkward talking about my struggles as if the depth of my emotions isn't normal. 20 out of 100 pregnant women experience something like this, and that's why this memorial is so important. The city's support of this project, this pregnancy loss memorial bench, gives a public voice to these silent struggles. It acknowledges that the grief is real, and it normalizes that grief, so that any parents having a hard time healing don't have to feel strange or alone. For so many reasons, uncountable reasons, Athens is an exceptional place to be a parent and to raise a family. And your support of our efforts today makes that even more true and more tangible. I'd like to introduce Dr. Connie Patterson, a licensed professional counselor. Connie is the one who helps us with the bimonthly support groups I mentioned, so that we can have someone there to facilitate the discussion, and I'll let you talk.
Well, thank you very much for having us on your agenda. A lot of what I had prepared to say is similar to what Molly has already said, except the statistics that I've found are actually, it's more prevalent. I found a statistic last year that there's approximately 6 million births in the U.S., and there are perhaps almost 2 million pregnancy losses. So I'm even seeing 1 in 3. And if you, if you look around, if you talk to someone, most likely either you or you know someone who's experienced some type of pregnancy loss. When we first had the group, we were talking about, it was a small group of people, and it was, took a lot of courage to show up, because it isn't really a discussed topic. You are told to kind of, you know, you have a couple of days where it's okay to be sad and then get over it, or, you know, at least you can be pregnant, or, you know, I mean, maybe this isn't the right time. But the emotional attachment to the unborn child happens so soon. And I've heard women and men talk about how the first day that they find out they're pregnant, they think about this baby. The second day, they're talking about, they're in their head talking of conversations they're going to have when the baby, you know, the boy or girl wants to have a boyfriend or girlfriend. And then, you know, the third day, they're already thinking about marriage and hard decisions. And so this baby becomes a person and becomes a reality very, very early on. So this loss is very, is devastating. The grieving takes time. It isn't something that can get over with. And so when we first talked about this, we thought about a memorial as a place that we didn't want it to be so isolated, because the experience itself is so isolating, but a place private enough that people would feel comfortable mourning or having some emotions, public emotions, and not feeling that they're being looked at, but also having the memorial be in a place that is public enough to, to show that the situation is so prevalent. In our groups, too, we've talked about this hidden club, this club that we don't know exists of women and partners who have experienced pregnancy loss, until you become a member, until you've come out and said something, and then you realize all the other people who have had that experience or have, or know someone who has. And so we really think this memorial will not only validate that experience and that loss, but also provide an opportunity for, for the mourning. Because I was, I read a quote, and it says, "If you cannot name your experience, you cannot have any real closure, and you end up with an emotional, psychological, spiritual dangling." And people can carry enormous grief for decades. The grief can lead to chronic pain, depression, and other, other illnesses and disorders that could then, you know, end up becoming more and more chronic. So this place, so this memorial will not only provide that place for, for mourning and grief, but also will validate the experience and increase the awareness among the Athens community. Any questions?
Yeah, so, on behalf of the Birth Circle, thanks for having us. Anybody have any questions?
The bench, what do you envision? What is, the gentleman who might make it? Is it a simple log bench? Does it have a?
We haven't gotten that far yet, because we've just been waiting to find out if it was really going to happen. If you have preferences, we would certainly, certainly. But something easy to maintain, something, something safe but comfortable as well, so that people have a place to sit comfortably.
I can't imagine this not having full support. And thank you for seeing that they got here tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Kent.
You're welcome.
For giving us your time.
Sure, thanks.
For Recreation Committee, thank you.
Well, on to the transportation. I'm sorry. Paula. I'm sorry.
I've got miscellaneous.
It's just a little difficult to speak, I guess.
I understand.
The Sandlot Association that oversees the softball, baseball youth program, again, with a memorandum of understanding for 2010, had placed an application for the county CDVG for lighting of one of their fields. We discovered this after the county had awarded that. So we're in discussion right now, and I think that will come up to council for determination on whether or not this will proceed. We're kind of under a little bit of a, there are time constraints. I think this needs to be resolved prior to April 1st, so that, I see that, Nancy.
You really wish to tread in on this one?
Well, I think that.
If you get one more opportunity.
And it's to let me to remove myself from the conversation?
No, no, I mean, I've, we've all had different experiences, but it seems to me that if CFI has to toe the mark, then the Sandlot guys do, too. And I think that it would be desirable, from my point of view, to see both the memorandum before they go. I mean, I think Pat has already suggested that ultimately, if some council decision's possible, I'm perfectly willing to abdicate that responsibility to you, because I don't want to increase my kook quotient any more than it already is. But I do think that we need to, that's what Bill says happens when I talk about this. But there are many people out there who have questions about devoting that much publicly into a single use, and they would like to see some substitution, and I thought maybe $10 a head from each of the players and those that can't afford it, to go to the REC budget, you know, because there are things that, it's a zero-sum game. We built that, here goes my kook quotient, we built that thing for giving out M&amp;Ms, what's it called?
Concession stand?
Yeah, concession stand. And, you know, and we, and we pay the electricity, we pay the water, and it competes with our own recreation program. I mean, we defer.
I don't know that it competes. We actually coordinate, but I will say that we have.
Coordinate means we take the second position later in the summer.
We have built in this.
Yeah, I mean, we can label it what you want. I don't care. It's a good, it's a wonderful thing, this Sandlot, but I want some money coming into the rec budget.
$5 per child is what we've requested.
You've requested five?
And with that, $400. That's $2,000.
Okay, $2,000, and it goes right into the REC budget? Okay. And also, how much for the concession stand?
We have not.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how far to go into that. I mean, any local school has the concession. It's usually volunteer-run, parent-run, the monies go right back into the program.
But we don't build the school's concession stand.
We have enough difficulty trying to generate any sort of profit from our pool concessions.
Well, you know, and I've often talked about that one, too. I just don't think we need to be in that business. But, you know, I mean, I know it's a voice crying in the desert, a kook crying in the desert, but I would really like to see the $5. And then I would like to see, if you're, they're using our electricity for these lights, then somebody's going to have to pay the bill.
We are looking, we're asking for our electricians now.
Does it sound familiar? It sounds like the white lights on another part of town.
Which has been turned off, that power.
Oh, thank goodness, once more.
Once more. The, it's just got me now. Oh, we're assessing what the cost would be in terms of our manpower in order for the electrician's role in this, you know, lighting of the field, and also trying to get from AEP what that cost would be, so. I'll come back with more details.
And, you know, is it really something we need? I mean, the people on the West Side who complain to us about not having the opportunity of walking through that area are the same ones who will be probably affected by that lighting. And it, you know, this, it's, where does it end?
If I, if I may weigh in.
Maybe in a lighted ball field.
I mean, but it's.
You have lighted balls.
I mean, it's, the sun is up till 9:30 at night. I mean, what the heck?
Nancy, if I.
They would have one for a long, long time, didn't they?
If I may weigh in, Member Nysley and myself, along with Ron Lucas, were present at the meeting with Rich Campatelli and Sandlot, and Greg Broderus was there as well, representing the West Side Neighborhood Association meeting. So a lot of these issues.
The service director there.
She was, Ron was there.
The resident was.
Ron was.
Ron was.
I was.
No, I know.
The mayor was there.
We were all Mr. Sportsman.
Should say no to sports.
Yes, they just said this right now.
Hey.
We have to hassle them.
I didn't say much.
A number of these issues were addressed in that meeting as well, and Greg read a statement that was from the Neighborhood Association, expressing some of their concerns with the use of land down on the West Side parks. So I do believe this is on the radar, and it is something that we're aware of, and Rich, as well, expressed some of his concerns with that relationship in Sandlot. So I think we're trying to hammer out something that makes sense. Mayor.
I agree. I think the statement read by the, for the West Side Community Association was in terms of paving. I believe at the time when they were addressing this, the concept is if we didn't go to the lighting, they could actually go to putting a basketball court somewhere on the, the area there. The discussion at the REC Advisory Board was that they had to use the money for lighting.
Correct.
I think the West Side Community Association probably needs to hear about that, so they can make way in whether they want the lighting or not. There is a, there is a degree of light pollution that will occur. The counterarguments to, the Sandlot League was saying is they could stretch their, their playtimes, therefore there wouldn't be as much congestion. I don't know if that's true or not.
Traffic, correct, yeah.
I am concerned about the concession stand. I imagine they, most of the goodies there are homemade, so therefore, it's probably not a, well, hot dogs are not homemade, I grant that, but I don't think it's really a big operation similar, it's not an operation similar to what we do at the pool. I do not know what kind of money they make. I'd be interested in finding out what kind of budget they have.
Maybe they can run the pool.
I don't think so.
And if I might, if I might add, too, that the lighting system that they were looking at was environmentally mindful lighting system that aims directly down, which would be completely different than what's currently there on the adult softball fields, which is more of a light polluter, probably the driving range that the university maintains and runs is probably more of a light polluter as well than this particular system of lighting that they're looking at.
Ron Lucas, Assistant Service Safety Director, did send out an email today to the West Side Community Association identifying indeed what the, this plan was, so that they still have an opportunity to weigh in here.
You know, and I feel, actually, now, just to increase my vulnerability on this, I just, I really don't think that we should be using backhoes and moving trees, either, when there's other stuff to do. I mean, I'm at a certain point where you just wonder, I mean, so we have public lands basketball stuff, but, I mean, there's a limit to how much we should be paying.
Yes. You know, again, at the Rec Advisory, they came up with a laundry list of all the stuff. Wonderful money they've spent in that area. And again, I'm just trying to be impartial in this. I think I brought up the fact that we have, many times, people wanted to use community gardens where they've expanded, and I know at one time they had to pull back because they were over the gas line over there. We have cases where, and again, it's all with good intentions, of course. Pathways within Sales Park and other land we acquired from the park area up there, I mean, making trails, it's all for the good, except there's a maintenance aspect of it as well as a cost. So I do want to get a better handle on it, but again, it's always trying, you're trying to rein in a lot of good feelings here.
Well, I think good feelings are wonderful, but I do think that a lot of the money that was invested went into signage and sponsorships by individuals and monuments to people, and, you know, and there's precious little, I mean, there's still water in some of the places if you were sliding into a base, get wet.
Well, and again, this whole grant process was without our awareness until it checked out.
As you, as I will, you know, that's probably why it sticks in my throat a bit.
Okay.
Mr. Beller, you have other questions?
With this memorandum, do they have a long-term plan? I mean, have they thought five years out of what they want? Or are we going to get blindsided by another grant next year? I mean, the thing with this is that it seems to just be creep. You know, that they did this, and then they've put all this money into it, and then something else, and now that they want this, they want that. And I just am concerned because I think that it's kind of been creeping.
To be totally forthright on this, upright or whatever, to forth, you install lights there, they're going to come back and want to ask for lights for the next...
Right. And that, I think that...
So I, we can put, you know, I'm not sure how this will play out, but if it does, that, yes, they can do the lighting for this field, then it could be, and then that is it in terms of any future...
Well, I mean, I think that there needs to be some kind of, of, you know, whatever you want to call a few years, long-range or short-range kind of planning on their part because it just seems that it's just, it's one thing after another. And, you know, I think that, I think there's legitimate concern that lights for one field and then it's going to be, so...
And if they have six fields, I mean, maybe they could give two back to soccer so they don't have to play in the sun on the riverbank in the stench. You know, I mean, decisions were made, we all had no input into them, but...
Okay, from my point of view, again, I'm trying to be impartial. I would like, I think, you know where I am with sports?
Yes.
I could rant for 20 minutes on a stand-up comedy routine about the negativity of sports from my point of view. So therefore, I usually back off on this stuff. When you say, "Do they have a plan?", it's not for them to have a plan, it's for us to have a plan, okay? There's enthusiasm for doing this stuff. You always have to start saying, "Where do we want to go with it?"
Right, and I'm...
We are the guiding parts of this.
We?
Yes.
Well, I mean, they're the ones who have, they're the ones who have kind of this vision, and they're, you know, I think that either the, you know, parks and rec department needs to come up with general guidelines, or they need to get together and have, this is what we foresee, you know, because, I mean, we can come up as city council and say, "Great, well, you know, in four years, we're going to have, you know, four baseball fields, two rugby fields, and a cricket pitch."
Sure. And in my last discussion with Director Campitelli, one of the things that Rich has acknowledged is that he is still relatively new in his position as Director of Arts, Parks, and Recreation, and he is wanting to look at long-term plan with input from the Rec Advisory Board to consider what are the city's needs with parks, and what is the city's long-term goals and plans for the space, these spaces that we have on the east side, west side, to consider long-term, the direction that the city wants to take. So I think that it's on his radar as well. It's something that he's aware of, and obviously, he falls under guidance of the executive branch there. But he has communicated with me that it's something that is on his mind, and he's prepared to begin to tackle that.
From my purview of this is that this is a grant. Usually when I come and go apply for a grant, I ask for authorization from you guys. This was not authorized. So therefore, I look as you are perfectly capable and reasonable to, say, reject this grant, even though it's awarded and everything's, we always like, you know, money coming at us. But again, how many fields get lit over time? Where direction do we want to have the West Side Street Park or any of our parks for that matter? Realize whether it's miniature golf, which is, you know, for a good cause, you know, or as, say, the community gardens and trails. This is, the end discussion at the Rec Advisory Board was that we will, within ourselves, put some kind of policy and stop awareness of when these grants come through. Most of the time I see these things. This one, of course, was through the county, through the Sandlot League, and we had nothing to do with it. We still can decide to have nothing to do with it.
Well, except for it's our land.
Well, no, when I say nothing to do with it, you say "out."
Right.
Right? Isn't that a baseball term? Out?
Well, it's safe.
I've got to raise one slight objection here. We're really having a long discussion over something that people feel very passionately about, under a miscellaneous item on a committee agenda. And to be fair, I think, you know, that organization, it's unfair to continue to have this too long without them having some kind of input. So that's the only thing that I would say under a point of order.
Sure. I have to thank Paula, though, for stepping up and, it takes a while, you know, to get the message across, but I appreciate you getting that money. I do. That was a genuine compliment. Take care of the other lights.
Go ahead.
One more miscellaneous. I was approached by Ryan White. He wants some county and community and council involvement for this year's polar bear plunge, February 13th. I asked if they wanted to come in front of you guys for committee, but it was, they contacted me, I think, Friday. This is, of course, jumping in the Lake Strauss Run. It's for Special Olympics. It's a fundraiser. Last year they raised, I think, 16,000. The year before, they raised 8,000. This is the third year, they hope to do more. They will probably approach you next committee meeting, which almost will be too late. So that's why I'm speaking for them. If you want...
What are they asking for?
Contributions or jumping in the lake? Your choice. Do you want to jump in the lake?
I think Bill should jump in the lake.
No. That so will not be...
I would give some money to them.
I will give money to somebody to jump in the lake. In fact, Member Bain, I will give $100 and vote for every one of our council members to match that amount. So, yes...
Don't hold your breath.
And I bet if we would approach those that have worked so hard and diligently on the west side to build the ball field, that my $100...
I thought you had raised a point of order, Bill.
On to the Transportation Committee. Many chair...
Thank you, Mr. President.
Go, please. Get us out of this.
I'm not sure that I can follow this, but I will with some information, with some information about transportation. The first is that we have a notice of award from the Ohio Department of Transportation for a $2.5 million federal grant, and this is from the municipal bridge program, and it will be for the Oxbow portion of the Richland Bridge. It's the upper portion on the way up the hill and to the downtown area. The cost share is 20%. I'm assuming the grant amount is the 2.5, so by fiscal year 2012, we would be needing to come up with the allocation on the cost share. Councilmember Bain?
Engineering, too.
And engineering?
It's not included, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, they raised, said a million, roughly?
Right.
I think so.
So we're talking about a million?
All right.
Right back to earth we are. No more fooling around.
This is good news for the improvements, but it, yes, it will cost us some money. Second one is the, an update on the mobility manager position, and this is a grant that we have supported in terms of providing some cost share for this fiscal year. The grant was awarded, and there was a delay in the award. So even though we appropriated the money, the $5,000 cost share last year, the actual starting of the grant, the posting of the position, and the filling of that will not begin until this year. So we will need to make an appropriation from this fiscal year for that $5,000 cost share.
I essentially forgot to put it in. I think the start fee was going to come out of the Athens enhancement. There is money appropriate in Athens enhancement, about $50,000, but we'll probably have to need to replanish it by five. And they are also asking for a possible commitment for 2011, about $1,000.
Correct.
Again, this is part of the process. If you remember, about two years ago, there was a county-wide transportation coordination plan, coordinating plan. I believe Chris was on it, and I was on it, representing those sources. This is the next evolution of trying to get somebody to coordinate all the different functions. So I need to put that in, but I can probably still work with what I have in the budget right now, but eventually it has to be, the Congress has to be filled again. We do have money in that fund line, I believe, but that's for future ordinance.
I'd like to also give an update for the parking garage and the summary of the revenue that came in, comparison between last year's income and this year's income. The 2008 parking garage revenue was $2,372, and we're talking, I believe, for the, these would be for the month of December. And then in 2009, the parking garage revenue was $3,000, so there was an actual increase. Then on the street meter collection in 2008, the collection revenues was $8,300. And this past year, in 2009, the street meter collections was $20,000. So we do have, by switching to the free parking in the garage, a sizable increase in the amount of the actual revenues then from the street meter parking. So it is something that we'd probably like to recommend then for next year. This seems to work well. Councilmember, or Mayor Wiles?
I thought only I did that.
Sorry.
Probably we'll have to hear from what the Uptown Business Associations think the results were. I know I, walking up and down Court Street and talking to various businesses, some were for it, some were against it. So it's really for them to, in one sense, their recommendation was to switch this around. It obviously helps, we can tell from the bottom line. We'll see if there's a strenuous objection to it. Realize in 2012, of course, the semester system will kick in, I think, and that will change the landscape again. Just so you're aware of all this.
Thanks, thanks for the comments. Yeah, in fact, originally, the recommendation came from the Athens Chamber of Congress for this switch, and then was supported by some of the Uptown Business Association members, Mayor Wiles, correct. And we've heard anecdotal comments from several of the business members. Some liked it, some didn't. Yes, President?
I've got one of the loudest, that's the stupidest thing council ever did, comments from a friend of mine on that, which I thought it worked great, but, so, I don't know what other people heard, but a couple of my friends didn't like it a lot.
I think it's, I think it's great for the city.
Yeah.
But I, I also received a negative comment that this person thought it, not as many people came uptown because they couldn't park on the street for free.
Yeah.
But we also didn't have the same employees parking on the street.
Correct. That's the other comment I've heard, is that we didn't have the parking of moving from one meter to the next every few hours from some of the employees. Well, thanks, and yes, we'd solicit comments and input from other people as we approach this, certainly next year. Miscellaneous items, I would like to let people know, it's that time of year that we have some of the pavement coming up. I know we had a report today that came in by email. I would urge people to go to the city website if they have web access, website access, and there is a very easy report form on the front page. It's Report Pothole. And so you can do that to let us know about situations as they arise, and we'll get to them as quickly as possible with the street department help. Excuse me. I'd also urge people to view the roundabout information that's on the Government Access channel. It's a 28-minute video that was prepared by Captain Pyle and Public Works Director Stone, and that's very informational. It's going to help us as we have the construction beginning in March, and that is going to result in delays. If you travel that area, you'll notice there are delays already because of heavy traffic. It will, it will undoubtedly get worse.
If you like the East State Street holdup during the widening process there, you'll love Richland Avenue.
Yes. And a comment from Mr. Broderus? Yes? You need to come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
The Government Channel.
Chris.
The Government Channel.
Chris.
Greg Broderus, 14 Granville. This may be, I've been a little too late, too soon, or something like that, but with the construction of the roundabout and the recent reappearance of Raptors in the 682 corridor, I don't know how we can do this, but I would like to recommend that we consider designating that part of 682 as a memorial parkway named in the honor of Aura Anderson. This is a completely new thing. I haven't checked the high revised code requirements or highway transportation safety and all that sort of thing, but I believe that it would be, something would be appropriate, and with the reconfiguration of that area, that would be, it might have some legal authority to further calm traffic. I don't mean to slow it down, but there's been a lot of, a lot of road kills, unnecessary, many different species on that highway because people are traveling that highway at excessive speed. I imagine with the construction of the roundabout, that that will probably slow down, I would hope. But there are designations, as you see around the nation, around the country, in different states, for memorial highways, but I guess we'll have to look at the state of Ohio regulations, but I would highly recommend that we take a look at that. This is the first time I brought this up. I've talked to some other people, and they really, they really thought it was exciting. In conjunction with the construction of the roundabout, that we look into the possibility of creating a parkway there on 682. It would be appropriate, and being as next to the ridges, and, you know, I don't, it won't be as much of a thoroughfare as previously, most likely. That's just my take on it.
Thanks for the suggestion.
I just wanted to propose that, and I will try and fill it out a little more and send you some email in regards to that idea.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would, before I forget, too, also about the, back to the roundabout and the videotape that's been prepared, I'd like to thank the Government Access Channel for their help on that production. So thank you all very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Two other miscellaneous items under transportation. One of them is the, that the Parking Committee has constructed a survey, and you may remember back in November or December, I brought the draft of that parking survey to the council members to take a look at it, received your comments. I thank all of you for the input on that. The community, the off-campus, the off-campus housing office at the Ohio University will be assisting us with distributing that survey. Some of them, they're checking to see if they might have permission to distribute it electronically. The other thing is, is that Paul Logue, I believe, as city planner, will help us to see if we can have that survey posted on the city website. So I direct you to check the city website in the next few days. We're particularly interested in input from residents who live in the close-in neighborhoods and are affected, their parking situation is affected. Last item is tangentially related to transportation, but it's a, another miscellaneous item, and it's just a final reminder that tomorrow night is the Athens Town Hall meeting, and we're looking for citizens to come to that meeting and to meet with Mayor Wiles and other city officials who will be there to let us know about what their concerns are for their local priorities for Athens. So that's 6:30 at the Athens Community Center. It'll be moderated, and everybody will have a chance to make their comments. And then they'll be providing feedback at a June Town Hall meeting later.